The provisions of the Governor's Executive Order N 2520 and N 3920, which suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act in pursuant to the orders of the Health Officer of San Mateo County. And as this meeting is necessary so that the city can conduct necessary business, it is permitted under the orders as an essential governmental function. Commissioners and city staff essential to this meeting will be video teleconferencing into the meeting, and there will be no physical location open to the public. The public can observe the meeting while sheltering at home via the Zoom link as the primary means of participation, or via the cable channel 26, or live stream broadcasts as alternate methods of viewing the meeting. Participation via the Zoom link will enable the meeting to be observed live and will enable the public to speak during public comment periods. The Zoom link was published in the meeting agenda. Live public comments are being accepted at this meeting in place of emailed public comments. Public comments may be provided live by members of the public utilizing the Zoom link to participate in the meeting. Utilize the raise hand function in the Zoom application on computer, smartphone, or tablet, or else enter star nine to raise your hand if dialing in by phone. Please ensure your name is correctly entered in your Zoom profile so city staff may properly identify you when it is your turn to speak. Those dialing in by phone will be called to speak by the last four digits of their phone number as shown in the Zoom interface. Okay, with those preliminary bits of guidance, we'll go ahead then and move into the meeting proper. I'll go ahead and ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Berman.
President.
Commissioner Big Stick. Commissioner Godwin.
I'm here.
Commissioner Hauser.
President.
Commissioner Lille.
President.
Commissioner Niblin.
Here. Thank you. We'll go ahead then and move to the salute to the flag. Commissioner Hauser, could you lead us in our salute to the flag this evening?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Hauser. We'll move then to administrative business. First item of administrative business is approval of the order of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the order of agenda? Commissioner Berman.
I move that we approve the order of agenda.
Thank you for the motion. Commissioner Lille.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second to approve the order of the agenda. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Big Stick. Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Lille.
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin.
Yes.
That motion passes six in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. So the next item of administrative business, excuse me, is the approval of the minutes of our meeting of May 4th, 2020. Are there any comments on this, or would anybody like to make a motion with respect to the minutes of May 4th, 2020? Seeing no hands, I'm going to go ahead and move that we approve the minutes of our meeting of May 4th, 2020. Is there a second for that motion? Commissioner Big Stick. Great. Well, we have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Big Stick. Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Lille.
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin.
Yes.
Motion passes six in favor and none opposed.
Thank you so much. The next item of administrative business is the designation of a liaison to the City Council meeting of July 13th, excuse me, 2020. This is the appeals for the 1415 Terranova WCF and 1300 Danman mixed-use projects. Maybe, Mr. Murdock, could you state a little bit more about all this, and then I'll ask if there's anybody who's inclined to volunteer?
Sure. The first application was a wireless communications facility. The commission may remember a number of public comments interested in the project, concerns about the location and appearance and necessity of that facility. And then the 1300 Danman mixed-use project was a project in Pedro Point with ground floor commercial and six residential units above the ground floor. It was located at the corner of Kent Road and Danman Avenue. And the commission discussed about a number of topics, including the architectural compatibility and color of some of the building materials, such as the golden siding.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Do we have a volunteer who could serve as the liaison for the City Council meeting in July 13? Commissioner Big Stick.
Good evening and thank you. I'm not inclined to rush to volunteer just yet. I did have a kind of procedural question for staff. And that question is, as I recall it, of those of us who are currently commissioners, only three of us were on that meeting for the WCF on Terranova, whereas all of us were there for the Danman project. So my question is, and again, I'm not inclined to rush to volunteer on this one, although begrudgingly I could if necessary, but is it possible to have two different commissioners depending on whether or not that, is it possible to have two different commissioners since not all of us were present for one, though we were all present for the other?
Sure. I'm not aware of anything that would prevent the commission from appointing more than one liaison. And so if there was some desire to have additional representation on one project or a liaison for each project, I don't think there's anything that would stop the chair from saying that.
Thank you for that. And this is really oftentimes a very significant matter when we're having to attend these meetings in person. When they're done remotely, it's a little bit of a different issue. And I do recall, Commissioner Big Stick, my recollection is that you were not in the majority with respect to the 1450 Terranova matters. Is that correct?
That's correct. And while I think I could probably give a fair representation while there, it also occurs to me that depending on how the questions go from council, if they decide to ask me my perspective from what happened to that meeting, you know, there's definitely a perception of bias regardless of how much I might strive to be objective as I recount the meeting. So I want, if possible, take myself out of that equation for that reason specifically, if possible.
Yeah, I have no question about your ability to sort of, without bias, explain, you know, sort of objectively what transpired. So having said it, it is a little bit of an awkward spot to be articulating the position of the commission when you weren't in agreement with the majority decision. I might be prepared to volunteer to serve as the liaison for the, well frankly, for both matters, although if somebody is inclined and wants to speak to the 1300 Danman mixed-use matter, that's fine with me as well. Well, it looks like I'll serve as the liaison for the meeting of July 13. Okay. So then we'll move on to oral communications. And this is the portion of the agenda that's available to the public to address the planning commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. Time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. And I don't actually see any participants besides commissioners, sort of on my, at least on my panel here. So I don't know, Mr. Murdock, whether you have any different information than that.
I do, Chair. Thank you. I can see four attendees in the waiting room. I see two names which I recognize in relation to the public hearing. There are two other individuals. If you wish to speak, if you're logged in using the Zoom application, please click the raise hand function. If you're dialed in by telephone, please go ahead and press star nine. And if we could give these folks a moment, Chair, to figure out where those functions are located or to enter the digits, maybe we could do that before moving on.
That sounds fine. Why don't we go ahead and wait a minute or so, see how things go?
And so again, for anyone that's participating in the meeting through Zoom, please click the raise hand button if you'd like to speak now during the oral communications period of the agenda. If you're dialed in by phone, press star nine on your keypad. And I'm not seeing any hands raised, Chair.
Okay. Well, thank you. We went ahead and called for any oral communication. It doesn't appear that we have any this evening. So we'll move on then and note that we don't have any consent items, so we'll move past that as well. And that will take us to our presentations for the evening. And we have a new public hearing, and this is CDP 42120. Again, file number 2020-006 coastal development permit, CDP 42120, filed by Greg Boyd in to construct a 287 square foot second-story addition to an existing two-story 1765 square foot dwelling on an 8439 square foot parcel located at 1490 Grand Avenue. And those are our assessed parcel numbers 023022040 and 050. And the recommended sequel action as to this particular matter is a Class 1 categorical exemption, sequel guideline section 15301, and staff's recommended action is to approve the project as conditioned. Can we go ahead and have a staff report?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Honorable Commissioners. I'm Senior Planner Christian Murdock. The project before you this evening involves a small addition to an existing single-family residence in the Pedro Point neighborhood. The addition requires commission review because of the location of the project site within the appeal jurisdiction of the coastal zone. In this area, additions as small as 10% of an existing structure's height, bulk, or floor area trigger the requirement for a review and approval of a coastal development permit. The city has not received any written public comments on this project. Staff has reviewed the proposed addition, which would add 287 square feet to an existing 1765 square foot single-family residence for an addition of approximately 16% to the floor area, and found that it complies with all zoning standards. In addition, the project would, in staff's assessment, improve the architectural appearance and integrity of the existing structure in a manner which is consistent with the design guidelines. Staff's detailed analysis of the project is contained in the staff report. Staff recommends approval of the project as conditioned and finding the project exempted from the California Environmental Quality Act. Thank you, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Are there any questions by commissioners of Mr. Murdock at this time? Commissioner Big Stick.
Thank you very much. The only question I had regarding the conditions of approval. Usually, we have conditions from the fire department in the COAs, and I didn't see any in this instance. I don't know that any are necessary, but I just wanted to be reassured by staff that no fire department COAs are necessary for this particular project.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Big Stick. That is often the case, and probably in most instances, you're familiar with new development or projects that have significant modifications to a structure. In this case, the relatively small scale of this addition does not trigger any significant fire upgrades, such as fire sprinkler requirements or anything of that sort. Nevertheless, anything that is required by the Fire Code can and will be applied during the building permit review process, but our colleagues in the fire authority did not identify conditions of approval necessary for this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Berman.
I also had a question on the COAs, particularly COA 16 and it might have been 17, regarding the applicant installing a public curb gutter and sidewalk. I noticed that the language of the COA was "if" the applicant installs. I know we've had a few projects in this area, and we've required the installation. I mean, I understand if the project is not going to be installing a public curb gutter and sidewalk, given that it's such a small addition, but I was wondering what the background of the word "if" in those COAs was.
Certainly. It's great to see that you read the project materials very carefully, and it was an intentional change on staff's part. Every project and every condition of approval that we impose on a project, we strive to thoughtfully consider those conditions of approval and put them through a series of tests, including a nexus and a rough proportionality test, which are legal requirements for impositions of exactions or requiring something of a developer. And so in this case, we did not feel that the small scale of the project warranted the installation of those public improvements, such as the sidewalk. The cost of installing a sidewalk and other public improvements, in staff's assessment, was out of proportion with the scale of the project. And for that reason, we intentionally omitted the requirement and left it such that if the applicant chooses to install certain improvements, then of course they need to comply with city requirements.
Got it. Thank you. I agree with staff's decision. I think that was a good decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman and Mr. Murdock for that explanation. Any other questions for staff before we move on to hearing from the applicant? Okay, good. So the way we'll proceed then is that we'll go ahead and hear from the applicant. The applicant, by our practice, has 10 minutes. Not that you need to use all 10 minutes if you don't need it, but the applicant has 10 minutes to present the applicant's project. Then from there, we typically move on to hearing from the public, and then the applicant is afforded a brief opportunity to respond to any comments that may come from the public. And from there, then we bring it back to the commission. So at this time, I don't know if it's Mr. Brinkman or Mr. Boyd, or maybe both, who are going to speak to the matter, but you're up.
And a quick administrative note, Chair. I will be keeping track of the 10-minute time limit. As we approach the 10 minutes, I'll be sure to inform you, Chair.
Thanks so much. And Mr. Boyd, if you were speaking, you're on mute.
Got it. Can everybody hear me? Can everybody hear me?
You're a little faint. You're going to have to speak up or get closer to your mic.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Greg Boyd, and it's great to meet all of you. You know, this is the first time I'm using Zoom. I'm trying to get the volume. Can everybody hear me? Can you hear me?
Mr. Boyd, you're pretty faint. We'll go ahead and give you a couple of seconds to try to figure out how to crank up the volume there, but maybe it's just a question of yelling to the mic, you know?
If you're using a computer, under the video settings, there's a little arrow. And if you click you click that, it should give you options that lead you to microphones. Under video settings. Is there a little camera in the lower left corner where mine says "stop video currently" so that I have that option? Then there's a little arrow in the upper right corner of that box.
Another option that occurs to me is that maybe we could give Mr. Boyd the phone number, and maybe that would be a way to hear him as well.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. Mr. Boyd, if you want to try dialing in, you can dial area code 669-900-6833. And then you'll need to enter webinar ID 93423893479. The webinar ID, if you're looking for that, is 93423893479.
If we're unable to connect with Greg, I can do the presentation for him, but we'll give him this chance to try and get connected.
Hello? Hello? Anybody there?
Okay, well, I assume we're on the screen there. You may need to, is it like a star? Was it star six? I forgot my own instructions. Star nine or?
Star nine. It's star nine, but I believe I brought it in.
You know, I just want to say that this is all new technology to me, and I'm kind of confused.
Well, we hear you now. We hear you now.
Okay, great. Okay. All I wanted to say was sunroom is about 30 years old, and it's leaking. And I think what Brian's done with turning this front of the house into aesthetic-looking front of the house to the street there, I think it's really good, and I'm very happy about it.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd. Anything further?
Yeah, I'll follow up here. I know Greg came to me. He was looking to replace the sunroom there with something that was a little more functional for him to live in. He was having issues with the leaking and stuff, so just trying to create a better living space for him while creating a space to better capture the view of Lindemar Beach and the Pacific Ocean. And we came up with the plans you have in front of you, like kind of capture that and play into the existing architecture of the home while expanding upon it. I know Greg's met and excitedly gone and shown his immediate neighbors and gotten a positive response from everybody. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Brinkman. I think what we'll do then is go ahead and see whether there's any public comment on this item. And Mr. Murdock, maybe you can help us with that.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. There are a few folks who are participating in the meeting. If any of you would like to speak on this agenda item or public comments, please click the raise hand function in the Zoom application. Or if you're dialed in by phone, press star nine on your keypad. So again, press raised hand on the Zoom application or star nine on your telephone. I'm seeing no raised hands, Chair.
Thank you. That being the case, I don't suppose there's any need for us to hear further from the applicant at this point, since there's nothing for the applicant to respond to. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing then and bring it back to the commission for questions and consideration. Commissioners, perhaps you've got, you know, questions of the applicant or just other observations or comments you want to offer regarding the project. Commissioner Hauser.
I don't have any questions for the applicant. I thought that the turret and the additional fenestration were a really nice addition. I thought, I personally felt that they were very aesthetically pleasing. So I appreciate the thoughtfulness that the applicant put into the design.
Thank you, Commissioner Hauser. Commissioner Big Stick.
Thank you. I'll echo the sentiment just given by Commissioner Hauser. And I'll tell you, on paper, reading the description, it was one thing, and looking at the 2D on the paper, it looked like an interesting design, and then seeing the house and the way that turret's going to be facing the ocean, it was kind of hard to tell from the ground what that view is really going to look like. But if it is what I think it's going to wind up being by the time it's done, those views really are going to be breathtaking, and it's just going to be such a beautiful addition. And I think it'll be a really nice addition to the neighborhood, too. It's an interesting design and a beautiful design.
Yeah, I'll just add that I was impressed by the aesthetics of it, and it just looked pretty cool. I'm not a trained architect or engineer or anything like that, but to my eyes, it looks like a neat upgrade, so I'm in support. Commissioner Berman.
I agree as well with my fellow commissioners. And then one item, just because we have the opportunity today, there aren't many agenda items. I wanted to thank Mr. Brinkman. I know we've had quite a few projects come in from you. I always appreciate the renderings of the new development with the context of the surrounding homes and street and neighborhood. Those are always extremely helpful for me, and so it makes me happy to see those in your plans.
Commissioner Niblin, you're on mute.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Murdock, if you could let Ms. Usher know that I thought her report was very well put together. I know it's not an especially complex matter, but it was a very easy read, and it was very clear to me what was going on without having to jump around. And it's just consistent with the quality of the reports I'm used to seeing, but I thought I'd pass that on.
Thank you, Chair. We appreciate it. I'll pass it on.
With all that said, then, I'd be prepared to entertain a motion if someone's inclined to make one. Commissioner Big Stick.
Thank you very much. I move that the planning commission finds the project as exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, approves coastal development permit, CDP-421-20, by adopting the attached resolution, including conditions of approval in Exhibit A, and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Excellent. Commissioner Hauser.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Murdock, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Big Stick.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Lille.
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin.
Yes.
Motion passes six in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. So I'm going to take this opportunity, because sometimes I forget to note that anyone agreed by the action, the planning commission has 10 calendar days to appeal the decision in writing to the city council. If any of the above actions are challenged in court, issues which may be raised are limited to those raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Judicial review of any city administrative decision may be had only if a petition is filed with the court, not later than the 90th day following the date upon which the decision became final. Judicial review of environmental determinations may be subject to a shorter time period for litigation. In certain cases, 30 days following the date of final decision. There are no continued public hearings, so that takes us to communications, commission communications. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any communications to share? Commissioner Big Stick.
Thank you, Chair, and I just wanted to take the opportunity, as I tend to at the end of the meetings lately, to say thank you to everybody who are wearing masks and doing their social distancing due diligence. And especially lately with the numbers going up, it's more important than ever. As buildings are our thing, you know, not all buildings have the best airflow going through. But even if they do have good airflow going through, when you get close to somebody, those masks make a big difference to keep those particles at bay. So I'm happy to report, in my place of business, people are pretty much wearing those masks as a matter of course these days, which is greatly appreciated for those of us who are working, because it's harder for us to move around. And it's difficult to have a mask as a regular mode of being, I know, but it makes a huge difference. Those of us working are appreciative, and I know those of us who are moving around you are also appreciative. And it's a community collaborative effort. We're in it together, and that's the message. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Big Stick. We appreciate you and your colleagues that are at work as well. It's important to all of us. Not seeing any other commission communications, I'll take us to staff communications.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to touch on one note. The City Council will be holding a special meeting on July 15th to discuss an RV permanent parking program. And so I wanted to make the commission and the public aware of that.
Thank you. That should be very interesting. And that takes us to adjournment, then. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you. That should be very interesting, and that takes us to adjournment then. Is there a motion to adjourn? But we shouldn't all jump at once. I'm going to go ahead and move to to adjourn. Is there someone who will second that motion? Commissioner Hauser.
I'll second the motion to adjourn.
We have a motion in a second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bigstick.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Lille.
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin.
Yes.
Six in favor, none opposed, the motion passing.
Great. We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, bye.